Attention, we'll call this meeting Uvalde County Commissioners Court for Monday, September the 22nd to session. I'll ask you stand and join us for a prayer. Father, as we come together this morning, we give you all the praise and all the honor and all the glory. God, we thank you for this day and its many blessings. We thank you for allowing us to serve you by first serving our fellow citizens. We pray this morning that you will forgive us for our sins and shortcomings. God, please bless this nation. God, please bless this community. God, please bless each and every one of us. God, please bless America. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of nine states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and Next on our agenda, we have Citizens Communications. We have one individual, Diana Carruth, signed up to speak.
Good morning, Diana Olvelo Carruth. I want to address the court this morning regarding the statement made by County Judge Bill Mitchell at the end of the last regular commissioners' meeting. I did send an email to the county attorney who represents this court in terms of clarifying and giving advice when there are issues that arise before the court. I also sent that email to all of you, and I've yet to receive a response. I sent that email to your attorney, county attorney, on September 8th. I followed up with two phone calls, left a message with one of his staff members, and then just left a message because nobody answered on Friday. And I followed up with the email, still no response. I've had a couple of people reach out to me that our attorneys have given me their, not legal advice or opinion, because I'm not employing them, but their opinion of how they understand the rule to read. I never received a copy of your policy, so I didn't know what that entailed, so I didn't have a chance to see it except this morning. And as I reviewed it, I did not find anywhere in the policy that it addresses specifically political attire, placards, signs. And I understand this is a meeting where we need to maintain decorum, we need to maintain order. All of those things should be the purview of the elected officials and the settings in which they gather to conduct the business of the people. I don't believe that my dress on September 8th violated any of those standards. And I don't think I showed up in this court in a halter top and short shorts or anything else that would have offended anybody else in this court, including the commissioners and Judge Mitchell. So as I look at the policy very quickly, because I just picked it up off your table this morning, I don't see anything that specifically addresses the issue that was stated by Judge Mitchell on September 8th. This is not a court proceeding per se in the sense that, and you might disagree, Judge Mitchell might disagree, but it's not a court proceeding. Nobody's on trial. You don't have a jury. You don't have attorneys deliberating a case. You are conducting the business of the people. And by default, the people, the public, that come before you to listen, to comment, to participate, should have the ability to come before you without having any of their amendments, any of their rights violated. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael Robinson. I don't often come before the court to bring up things, but one thing I wanted to bring up, and I just ask a question. I was aware, I think most of you are aware, that this is a season the farmers are burning their old, I guess their leftover spoilage of the fields. And one of my concerns is, is I think the, it's been going on for probably a week now. Myself and other people in the community work outside, and there are others that maybe have health issues. And my concern is the health effects of the smoke that's kind of settling in over our community and county. I'm not anti-farming, and I'm very well aware this is a farming community. My concern is, I just, I think the weather pattern may have something to do with it, the smoke is not being pulled up, but I'm just kind of getting tired of breathing the smoke. And so I have reached out to the hospital to see if there's any spike in health concerns. But I think on this issue, I just wanted to ask, how long do, as the county, can we expect this controlled burning of the fields to continue? Is this going to be another week or two? And I think there's going to have to be a balance between the health concerns of the community and the needs of the farmers. It's not one of those clear-cut against farming or, you know, being somebody that's over-cautious about health concerns, but as I raised to some other folks, so last time I checked, we don't allow smoking in the county building. And that's for a reason. And although cigarettes are a little different, you're still breathing smoke. So I just wanted to bring that to y'all's attention. And anyway, I know you probably can't respond, but my, just my concern is the balance of the length of time for these control burns. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me just say on that one right quick, is that an agriculture control burn is allowed by the statute, and is something this court has not had any purview on, so, thank you. We'll move to item number three, and that's consider an act upon approval of minutes. You have before you the minutes of September 8th for consideration. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Have Commissioner Pargas with the motion. Commissioner Garza with the second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number four is a consider an act upon a public hearing on the proposed 2025-2026 Uvalde County tax rate. Individuals have an opportunity to address this in a moment. I'll allow the auditor, Alice Chapman, to first outline the numbers. Alice.
Notice of a public hearing on tax increase. A tax rate of 0.6139 per hundred dollar valuation has been proposed by the governing body of Uvalde County. Proposed tax rate, 0.6139 per hundred. The no new revenue rate, 0.544961 per hundred. The voter approval tax rate, 0.613989 per hundred dollars. The no new revenue tax rate is a tax rate for the 25 tax year that will raise the same amount of property tax revenue for Uvalde County from the same properties in both the 24 tax year and the 25 tax year. The voter approval tax rate is the highest tax rate that Uvalde County may adopt without holding an election to seek voter approval of the rate. The proposed tax rate is greater than the no new revenue tax rate. This means that Uvalde County is proposing to increase property taxes for the 25 tax year. This public hearing is being held to fulfill the obligations by the statute. The proposed tax rate is not greater than the voter approval tax rate. As a result, Uvalde County is not required to hold an election at which voters may accept or reject the proposed tax rate. However, voters may express your support for or opposition to the proposed tax rate by contacting members of the Commissioners Court of Uvalde County at their offices or by attending the public hearing we're in right now. Your taxes owed under any of the rates mentioned above can be calculated as follows. You take your property tax amount, it equals your tax rate, and everyone's varies depending on where you live, times the taxable value of your property, and then you divide by 100. It requires, this, this meeting, this notice of public hearing will require a record vote as well. Thank you.
Are there any comments from anybody, questions, anybody like to address this issue during the public hearing? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing at 10:14. And we'll move to item number five, and that's consider an act upon adoption of the 2025-2026 Uvalde County tax rate, and we will take a record vote.
I apologize. I didn't realize.
I'm sorry.
So you have a couple of items. We've divided them into two agenda items. The first one that I'm going to bring up is just to give you the information related to the tax rate. Then we're going to skip to the next item where you will take the record vote. And you have been provided the language if you should decide to support or be against the tax rate. Each one was provided last week. I sent out all the data last week as required by law. And also, we published everything on the website except for the, this order, because it hadn't happened yet. Yeah, okay. Whereas it is necessary for Uvalde County Commissioners Court to set the tax levy in order to provide funds with which to meet the budget requirements of the county and to pay the expenses necessarily incurred in connection with the services provided by the county to Uvalde County residents, therefore be it ordered by the court. This year's levy to fund maintenance and operations expenditures exceeds last year's maintenance and operations tax levy. This tax rate will raise more taxes for maintenance and operation than last year's. The tax rate will effectively be raised by 4.26% and will raise taxes for maintenance and operations on a $100,000 home by approximately $14.80. The $100,000 home is the medium home, median home value provided by the appraisal district. That ends this particular section.
Okay. You have before you first the adoption of the tax rate, as outlined. Is there a motion to adopt the tax rate?
There is a motion to approve the property tax increase, but they adopted the tax rate of 0.13129, effective date, 12/06/2016.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Mr. Cuthbert? Discussion on that motion. We do have one individual that wants to address it, Diana Carruth.
And I'm sorry, the only thing I didn't mention was the debt service rate. I apologize. And I can give you that now, or I can do it afterwards.
We'll do that, we'll do that in the next, let's do that in the next hour.
I wasn't quite sure where to sign, Diana Olvelo Carruth. I wasn't quite sure where to sign up to make my comments because of the three different items. I wanted to make sure I heard the presentation from your auditor, which she's already provided. And really, I mean, other than, we have a $62.9 million budget. You're going to be asking taxpayers to pay 61 cents for every $100 of the assessed value of their property. That will be on top of what they pay to the school district, to the city of Uvalde, to our water authorities, to every other taxing entity in Uvalde County. So it adds up, and it adds up quickly. I was also interested that I saw, and I thought I saw it in the budget, elimination of an elections clerk, but that's gone, a decrease in your flood fund due to EOC expenses. And I'm still curious about the questions I raised at the last commissioners' meeting regarding the tobacco settlement fund. Thank you.
Okay, that's the only individual that has requested to speak regarding the tax rate. We do have a motion on the floor. Is there any addition, comment by the court? If not, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. We'll take a record vote. Commissioner?
Yea.
Commissioner?
Yea.
Commissioner?
Yea.
And I vote aye. The motion carries five to zero.
Judge, you have the original.
Hang on, hang on. We'll move to item number six, we'll move to item number six, and that's consider an act upon adoption of the resolution regarding the tax rate. Now you want to go into the other item?
In the tax rate that you just adopted, the general fund maintenance and operation tax rate is 0.4258. The INS rate or debt service rate is 0.0817. That rate is 2.5 cents, 0.025 cents higher due to the nine man, $900,000 debt issuance. The farm-to-market flood maintenance and operation tax rate is 0.064, making a total add valorem tax rate of the 0.6139, which you adopted in the previous item, but I was required to read this out. And if you have any questions, I provided you all the math. I provided you, and all of this is also, as soon as the judge has this signed, this will be put on the website, along with, the notice is already on the website. It's required by law to be on it before y'all see it. New rule. And then the, the instructions for adoption are really just mechanical. They want that language in your motion. That isn't something I came up with. And thank you. With this, gentlemen?
Well, let's adopt it first. Let's adopt it first. All right. You've heard the explanation of the resolution. Are there any questions regarding that? Is there a motion to adopt the tax rate resolution as presented?
I will definitely accept the tax rate.
Have a motion by Commissioner Garza. Is there a second?
I'll second, Judge.
Commissioner Pargas? Discussion? And we'll take a record vote. Commissioner?
Yea.
Commissioner?
Yea.
Commissioner?
Yea.
And I vote yea, so the motion carries five to zero. Now...
Thank you for the opportunity to work with you again, Judge Mitchell. It's nice to be able to say I am not the budget officer, I am his assistant.
Well, as y'all know, the budget process takes six months to do. This does put the, brings it to an end, so I thank not only the auditor, but the treasurer, all the elected officials and staff for all their participation. It's not been, it's never an easy task, but we do appreciate everybody's effort. Thank y'all very much.
Really good. The officials have all been extremely informational.
Thank y'all very much. Next, next month, you will be getting a hard copy of the budget presented to you. Thank y'all. We'll move to item number seven, and that's consider an act upon appointing an individual to fill the vacancy of ESD number two Board of Directors. EST, EST, ESD two, Commissioner Wendy Hightower has resigned her position, leaving a vacancy on the Board of Directors. It's been recommended that the Commissioners Court appoint Ross P. Scott to fill that vacancy.
Judge, I'll make a motion.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cuthbert.
Ross Scott fill the vacancy.
For Mr. Scott to be appointed to that vacancy. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Yegel, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, let's go ahead and, if you'll take this, swear Mr. Scott in right quick so he can go to work. If you'll come right over here.
Okay.
Right there, be fine, if you'll turn face to me, raise your hand, and repeat after me. I, Ross P. Scott, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of, the office of, the office of, Uvalde County Emergency Services District two, Commissioner of the County of Uvalde, the State of Texas, and well to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of this state and of the United States. So help me God. Congratulations. Mr. Commissioner Cuthbert, why don't you turn around there, that Julia wants to get a picture of you. No, right there. Thank you. Item number seven is consider an act upon a presentation of the major medical insurance by our agent of record, Joe Jobst.
Morning, Judge Mitchell, county commissioners.
Morning.
It's that time of year again. So, my name is Joe Jobst, and I am the agent of record for your health insurance program, have been for the last 100 years or so. And I want to remind the court that we have a self-funded health insurance program. So in essence, we hire administrators to take care of our program, but we are the insurance company. To protect our interests, though, we do purchase two insurance policies, and one policy says that we, that the insurance carrier will pay for any claims for any individual in our group that exceeds $45,000. So we have a cap on our liability. And then we buy a second policy, which is an aggregate policy that states that if all of the claims incurred by the county exceed a certain level, we are protected against catastrophic losses. So we're not completely self-insured, we have protections. And those protections, over the years, as you'll see in this presentation, have been very beneficial to the county. So I've opened your packet to the page that is really everything that we're going to talk about today, and it's, this is the cost history page. And I use a cost history, and in this case, we're looking at six years worth of data, including annualizing this year, because we only have 10 months into this year, so I've annualized that data. And then the top line is what I estimate next year's going to be. And when you look at this page, there's a lot of numbers on here, and I apologize for that, but I put a lot of information on this one page. But if you look at this page, and two of the things I want to point out, on the left-hand column, you've got premium versus claim. You have the carrier premium and the specific claims. And if you go down that line, you can see that's the amount of premium that we pay for that policy that covers anything over $45,000, and the amount of claims that the insurance carriers have paid against that policy. Well, this year, you can see that we are scheduled to pay about $635,000 in premium. The carrier has already paid out 1.3 million in claims. So they've lost a lot of money on us this year. We've had a particularly active year as far as the health insurance claims are concerned. But if you look at that line all the way down and down to the bottom, and I've annualized, excuse me, I totaled all the years that we have, and over the six years that are on this presentation, we've paid about $4.2 million in premium, and the insurance carriers that we've had over the years have paid out $6.1 million in claims. So those policies have protected the county to a significant level and has helped us keep a very balanced cost in our programs. So again, we're looking now at the 24, 25 annualized numbers, and we've got our large claim numbers there, and there's two numbers. The first number are the number of individual claims that have exceeded 50% of that $45,000 limit, and the second number are the number of people who have exceeded the $45,000. So this year, through just 10 months, we've had 33 individuals exceed 50% and 16 exceed the $45,000. If you look back over the last six years, none of those years have come close to that number. So we've had a very active year this year. Our fixed costs this year are annualized at about $913,000. If you look at that paid claim at 2.9 million, that's an annualized number, and compare that to the last five years, we were at 2.6, 2.1, 2.4, 2.1, 2.0. So again, we've had a very active year. And if you slide all the way over to the right-hand side, you can see that our costs this year are 10.9% over last year. Now I'm going to talk a little bit about why I put so many numbers on this page. I'm putting six... I'm putting six years' worth of data, and this is why. 10.9% is probably about average in the industry. The industry is incurring about 8% to 10% increases per year, every year, just in the industry, 8% to 10% increases every year. Well, this year, we had almost 11%. Last year, we had 22%. So if you looked at just the last two years, you'd say, Joe, we're not doing that good. Our claims, our costs are really accelerating. And that's why I show you, the year before, we had almost a 20% decrease in costs. So last year's 22% increase was really getting us back to where we were two years prior to that, really kind of flat. So we had that one really good year, that if I didn't show you that, you wouldn't know that really we're in good shape. You'd say, we're doing terrible, 22% last year, 10% this year. So what I did is I averaged the cost increase over the last six years, and that's that far right-hand side in the red, in the red, and our average increase per year over the last six years is 2.6%. Again, the industry is running 8% to 10% every year. So we're really doing well, and a lot of the reason we're doing so well is that stop-loss protection that we have. The insurance companies aren't doing so good, they're not real happy with us, but we're doing really well, really a very stable program over, when you look at it, over a course of six years. So I took this data, and I plugged in our renewal rates for next year, and then what I think is going to happen with our paid claims, our paid claims are not going to stay at this historic level of $2.9 million. And if you look at the prior five years prior to this year, and you kind of just average out those years, we're at about 2.5. And so I just went in with kind of an average for next year. I've looked at a lot of these individually large claims, these 16 claims that are exceeded our stop-loss, and many of those are conditions that have been resolved. These people are okay, they're back to work, it's kind of a one, a one-time, maybe a surgery or something. So I've taken all that into consideration, and I believe that our total cost next year is going to come in around $3.6 million, which is actually about 7% less than this year. Now, that 3.6, again, if you look back over the prior five years, it's still about as high as any individual year in the last five years. So I don't think I'm being overly optimistic when I say I think it's going to settle back down to about 3.6 million. So I expect that actually a small reduction in our costs next year.
So the obvious question becomes, why would the insurer continue to provide us at the current rate?
Well, that's a real good question. And we've, if you look over on the left-hand column, I tell you the name of the carrier, and, and so for the last two, three years now, we've had Granular, and before that, we had Gerber. Well, look at those costs with Gerber. With Gerber, we were paying premium of $680,000, $629,000, $750,000. And all of a sudden, when we went with Granular, we had a rate of $427,000. So that was an, an unrealistically low rate, that I looked at it, the carrier was a solid carrier, I think they were just trying to increase their market share, and so when I questioned them on that, they, they, they told us that they had guarantees, they had, they had limits on their renewals and limits on their, their lasers, and lasers where they've identified an individual who is likely to exceed the stop-loss the next year, and they increased the, our limits for that one individual. That's called a laser. So they gave us limits that made me feel more comfortable, and I thought even if we just went with them for one year, how could you pass up on a, on almost a $200,000, or more than that, $300,000 savings in premium? So we went with them, thinking that maybe it would just be for a year or two. Well, they've kind of inched their rates back up, so, you know, this year, we're at $635,000, it's going to go up another 15% for next year. So they're inching their rates back up, but they're still not even where we were in '21 and '22. So I think that we've been very fortunate that we fell in with this Granular, in that they did give us some kind of caps on their renewals, and, and also the, the no new lasers. Now, both of those provisions have been eliminated from this year's renewal. I, I did negotiate us down to a 15%, which I thought was really reasonable, considering the losses that they took. But they, so next year, we may be looking at a little different situation, where we're going to have to depend on the marketplace. But the last couple of years, Granular has been so good to us that we haven't even needed to go out to the market. We do go out every year, we get bids, we request bids from probably 10 to 12 different insurance carriers, but we haven't depended on those bids because our renewals with Granular have been so advantageous to the county. So we just got, got a little lucky three years ago with Granular, and, and they've just been really good to us for the last three years.
Any other questions, Joe?
What goes into the fixed cost? That's a pretty big number.
It is a big number, and so the, the premiums for those two insurance policies that I talked about, the premiums for those policies are part of the fixed cost. And then we pay an administrator, Imagine360, used to be called Group and Pension Administrators, they got bought out by Imagine360, they administer our program. So they take, they, they process all of our claims, they process our premium payments, they, they provide ID cards, so, you know, they, they arrange for our prescription drug benefits, so they administer the program for us. And then my commissions. So all the costs that are involved are the fixed costs. Those costs are, that, those are the costs that the county will pay. You're going to pay the fixed costs every year. The, the variable then are the claims. So the, the thing that might vary up and down, and why we see this little roller coaster every year, is, is because of the claims. Some years, we have really good claims, like we did in 2022 at 2.1 million, and some years, like this year, we're almost at 3 million. So you just see that little variation of cost based on claims.
The $635,000 is a part of the 900, not in addition to.
I'm sorry?
The $635,000 premium is a part of the 900.
It's included, it's included in those fixed costs. That's correct. That's correct.
Any other questions?
Are we, actually, the employee contribution, is that staying pretty much the same, or?
Yes, the employee contributions has, has stayed pretty level over, over the last few years. And I think that these, been a conscious effort to try and provide the employees with as good a program as we can. You know, as, as you all know, they're not making a whole lot of money as, in their salaries, and so the benefits is one of the things that I, that I think they really appreciate. Y'all provided for them.
How do we compare with other counties? Are we...
Pardon me?
How does that compare, employee contribution, to similar type municipalities?
Well, it's, it's funny that you ask that question, because during our meeting just a week ago, when we kind of finalized these numbers with the judge, excuse me, treasurer and the auditor, that question came up, and we have the ability to run a report. I was hoping to have it by today, I would have surprised you with an answer, but I don't have that, but we, that question did come up just, just last week at the meetings, and we will be providing that with the insurance committee and, and get a good idea how we do compare.
I want to share that. Okay. Pleasure.
Any other questions, Joe? So Joe, your recommendation this morning is?
My recommendation is that we accept the renewal with Granular.
You've heard the recommendation...
And with Imagine360.
...of our agent of record, Joe Yobst, is there a motion to accept his recommendation?
I'll make a motion, Judge, that we accept the recommendation.
Commissioner Pargas, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Garza, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move down to number nine, and that's consider an act upon proposed fiscal year 2025, 2026 Fairplex rental agreements and contracts as presented by the Fairplex director, Wendy... Good morning. Yes, it's already in there.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
All right. So every year, we like to go over our contracts and our rental fees, and include any changes with... Okay. For, so this year, we are talking about raising our rental fees for the Commissioner's Auditorium and for the rodeo arena. When I started in 2013, 12 years ago, we were charging $1,850 for the Commissioner's Auditorium, and in 2017, we raised that to $2,100. We just always try to be online with our other venues in town. So we have not raised rates since 2017, so it's been seven, seven years. So we have decided, well, we're suggesting that we go up, it's a 19% increase from $2,100 to $2,500 on our, on our Commissioner's Auditorium. And then also on the rodeo arena, we wanted to go up, we've been doing a non-gated rate of $1,500, and then for these rodeos that come in, like the Cactus Jack or different things like that, that are gated, or they charge for tickets, we were $2,000. So we were going to go to $2,000 a day for non-gated and $2,500 for gated. And again, this is in line with other rodeo arenas of our type and our size, San Antonio, Gonzales, of course, we're, we're, we're a little smaller than a lot of those, but, and in location, 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 we don't have the location that those guys have, but... So we just, we like, we try to stay in line, and we know our market, you know, here in Uvalde, we, we know our market. I also wanted to suggest a nonprofit rate for the arena and for the Commissioner's Auditorium. If they are true 501(c)(3) and they can show us their 501(c)(3) status of $1,500, which is a $1,000 discounted rate, I think that would be a good thing to do. Right now, we try to help them in different ways, and just think it'd be more streamlined, be more consistent if we just had a nonprofit rate. And back to the, the rental of the Commissioner's Auditorium, we, we're very high demand, which is another thought about increasing our rates. We don't, we don't have, there's no Saturdays left to offer. It's really hard around graduation time, October's a big wedding time, June, you know, and July are big wedding times. We're booked two years in advance, when we're nice, three years in advance, so if you don't call us a year and a half before your wedding, or keen say you're, you're not having it at the Fairplex. So we are in very, very high demand. Around Christmas time, everybody wants to have a Christmas party, we end up having Thursday night Christmas parties, Friday night Christmas parties, Sunday graduation, same way, because that's all they can get. So I just wanted to mention that on the rates. Okay. The first few, just little minor changes to our contract that we've come to find is a need for on page two of nine, on letter E. The early access fee must be paid at the time requested to be placed on the calendar. So they will rent a Saturday night, but then a lot of times, they'll want Friday to decorate. These are very elaborate decorations, so they need that extra time. So we have a $350 early access fee, but when we do that, we can't rent the venue on Friday anymore. So, and it, 350 is very generous to let them, they come in at noon and do their thing, but we're gonna, we want them to make sure that when they come in and request that, they pay that 350, and we put it on the calendar, because if they change their mind, then we lost out, you know, $2,100 for renting that venue. Not that Fridays are as popular, but certain times of the year, they definitely are. And then letter F, cancellations. We've had some people, we've had a problem with date changes, they keep changing the date, changing the date, and so it just causes a lot of mess in our paperwork and confusion between us and the auditor's office, trying to keep all of these things straight, make sure everybody gets their deposit refunds, make sure we get our rental fees. So we're going to start handling, and we'd like to handle a date change as a cancellation, and then cancel the contract and start over fresh with a new contract, just makes paperwork simpler. Security, security is now being handled in our office. They no longer have to go to the sheriff's office and handle it, they just handle it in our office, and we work, we work with the sheriff's department on our end, it's just more convenient for our, our leases. The sheriff's department did go up on the per-hour rate of security, so that's also highlighted in yellow, we had to add that to our contract. On the next page, decorations, every event, it seems like we learned something new about decorations. So we noticed the floor was slippery all the time, and we couldn't make it not be slippery, it was dangerous, and some of the people were saying, you're, part of your floor is slippery, and we rent that little thing from Reno's and try to buff it out, and nothing works. So anyway, figured it out finally, it's balloon spray. They bring those big balloon arches and spray them there on, and then the whole floor is just very dangerous. So, for the safety of your guests, balloon spray may not be dispensed inside the venue, so they can use it before they come, but, so. And then, people have been taking mirrors off the wall lately, don't know why, and they want to use them in other parts of the venue, so I had to add, furniture planters and mirrors are not to be moved by leasing. Requests for removal must be made seven days in advance. So, we have a, they have a bad habit of coming in on the day of their event and wanting things, and we only have one staff member there, and we can't, we can't accommodate them a lot of the times, so they need to ask in advance. Page four, the next page. So I've been getting a lot of midnight and later phone calls from the police department, sheriff's department, and security, because our fire alarm goes off. The haze machine causes a lot of smoke, and it's really cool, but when they do too much, and we've warned them and warned them and warned them, it, our intake, AC brings it in, and then it sets off the fire alarm, it's very loud for them, and it's very loud for me when I'm asleep, and it goes off, but, so we just, we, we try to, we do have a document that we have the DJs and the decorators and everybody, caterers fill out, so they understand our rules as well. And so we're really trying to talk to our DJs and our bands a lot about, you've got to keep the haze. I mean, it's still a lot of haze, but we just got to keep it to a minimum. So they may lose their deposit if they over haze, because our fire department doesn't need to be called. That's not good, because it's keeping them away from a real fire. Okay, page seven. This is just basically the stage, our stage is very heavy. We keep it located on the south wall of the Commissioner's Auditorium. Again, they'll do it themselves, which is very dangerous, or they'll do it, ask us at the last minute when we have one staff member there, so we're just trying to streamline, streamline that. Stage relocation requests will result in a hundred, a hundred dollar fee, it must be requested seven days prior, and if they want to use the staging over in the pavilion, we can do that, we just need some notice, and there's a hundred and fifty dollar fee. And looks like that is all of the changes we're proposing for this year. Did you have any questions about the fees, or?
Anybody have any questions about the fees?
Okay, so I, my recommendation today is that we accept our updated rental fees and rental agreement for fiscal year 25, 26.
You've heard the explanation and the recommendation?
I had a question about the RVs.
Yes, sir.
It seems like events I've been at, there's, there's a lot of RVs out there, is that, is that a competitive rate?
$40?
Yes. Yes.
For where we're at, our size venue, maybe Kerrville or places like that, charge about 30, 35, well, about 35 now. I've also seen 50, so we're right in the middle, at 40, and we're doing well with that. And we have 111 RV spots, and we have, just quickly, since you mentioned it, Haley Kinsel, she's a four-time world champion barrel racer, she's hot right now, she's having, she grew up coming to high school rodeos here at Uvalde, at our arena. So she's putting on a youth barrel race, something new she started, and we're almost completely sold out, and it's not until the middle of October. So we have 111 RVs, and we're getting ready to add potentially, hopefully 14 more, so that's why we slowly keep adding, because we keep bringing these large events like this, so we're excited about that. But yes, we are right, right there, we're competitive on our RV rates.
During the summer, there's a ventilation cooling for the rodeo.
In the rodeo arena? The west side gets pretty hot. We are looking at adding two fans, but we don't have any space to add them on the east side, but the west side is the really hot area, and we can open all of the doors. We also have, what are the, they're not fans, but they're the exhaust fans, that pull that heat through. So, but on the smaller rodeos, if we can, we try to keep them off the west side, and it does the trick. We do have electricity almost in every stall area, so some people that are pros at this rodeo stuff will bring their own little fans and mount them in the stalls for the horses. So we don't have complaints. The only complaints we used to get was the bulls, the bull area, and we took care of that with fans. And then Archie McFadden gets kind of hot sometimes in the summer, but, and cold in the winter, he's the only one.
Other questions or Wendy? Is there a motion to accept her proposed rental rates and agreements?
I make a motion to accept.
Commissioner Pargas, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Kaufman, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Wendy?
Thank you.
What else? Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. We'll move to item number 11, no, excuse me, item number 10, that's Consider an Act Upon the County Clerk's Annual Records Management and Archive Plan. The clerk asks that that be postponed until perhaps our next meeting, at which time she may have better material to present. We'll move to item number 11, and that's Consider an Act Upon the County Clerk's Archival Project with CoFile. Donna, before you get into that, can we first welcome back former county clerk Lucille Hutcheson, who's with us today. Lucille, stand up and wave at us.
Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you for joining us.
Donna?
Okay, good morning, thank you for allowing me to be here again this morning. I wanted to give you an update on our project in the County Clerk's Office. This year, our preservation and imaging project was the probate books that are housed in the County Clerk's Office, the date back all the way to 1856. And we also did marks and brands, surveyor notes, and DD-214 military discharge records. So all of that preservation has happened with the help of CoFile and my dedicated staff. There was, in the probate section, there was over 25,000 pages that were preserved, and 76,000 pages that were imaged, so they're now digitized. On the marks and brands, it was over 100 years of records that they were able to preserve, and on the surveyor field notes, nine volumes. And then on the DD-214, we were able to preserve those. So this year's projects have been successfully completed, and I'm very honored to dedicate the projects to a couple of people or individuals. The preservation and restoration process is quite detailed, and I was hoping that CoFile would be here to help to explain it, because they go into so much detail whenever they are preserving our books. They have a staff of over 100 employees, and they all wear white gloves, and they take every page and take it out of the book, remove tape, they fix the torn edges, they deacidify, remove fingerprints and things like that, and then they preserve them. And then they place them in disaster-proof binders that are guaranteed to last 500 years. Y'all can let me know if that works out. But I am so honored to dedicate these projects. The first one I would like to recognize is Lucille Hutcheson. She was the county clerk for 22 years, from 1988 to 2010, and all of the project, the books in this project were preserved in her honor, the honor of her dedication to our county. And if y'all don't mind, I would like to present her, Ms. Lucille, if I can get her here. So this is for your hard work and dedication, and just so that you know, all of the books have your name on them as a dedication to you. And I just want to thank you so much for everything that you've done for me. I don't know if y'all know this, but I have called her probably 500 times for help, it's not the easiest job in the county, and she has been a mentor, she has chastised me when I needed it, and corrected me, and helped me in more ways than I could ever imagine, and I'm very honored and thankful for you.
Thank you. I would like to accept this on behalf of the county clerks that came before me, you know, there was a bunch of them, and I can only, I worked with two, Eileen Carlisle and Dorothy Rogers. And Dorothy was my mentor, she was tough, and she told you how it was. And of course, the staff, we are only as good as our staff is, and they made me look pretty good, and I appreciate each and every one of them, and I thank you.
Thank you.
And so the next dedication is the dedication of the preservation of DD-214 military records. Commander Sessado is here, I would like to present this to you, and just in honor of the veterans of Uvalde County, and thank you for everything that you've done for them. And so our folks have that dedication in there for the veterans, the local veterans. So thank you very much. All right, and lastly, this is something that's maybe not normal, but I wanted to do it, and I think that it is appropriate, and the very first, this is the 500-year disaster-proof binder, and the very first book is dedicated to the Uvalde County Judge, Bill Mitchell, for your many years of service to this county and being our probate judge. So I would ask you to accept this certificate and.
Gosh. My gosh, that's a lot of them. That's actually been heavy, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, appreciate it. That was, I'll give it back.
And, oh, Judge, here's your.
Oh, thank you.
All right, so I don't know if y'all have had a chance to see this, I've had it up here, so everyone can admire it, but I would, if I can turn it around, to show it off. There we go. So this is what the old books were like, and.
That's one of those sales books over there.
And so the new binder will have all the documents stored in there for presentation. After the meeting, if y'all would like to come down to the clerk's office, we're going to have our questions, and if you can come and help us with that, we'll be willing to stop by. I just want to show you all, this is a picture, an actual picture of our county clerk's office back in the day, we still like to go around and say, yeah, the chief model we said. But this is an actual photo, and I think it's so, and Judgmental believes that that chair is still in office. That board is still in our office.
That chair, maybe that chair right over in the corner.
So anyway.
Head to Uvalde, Uvalde. Thank you.
Sure, come on up. I would like to have each and every one of you, like each and every one of you, come to look at probate records. They are history of Uvalde County, and they go back to slavery, I mean, you know, the inventory of schools is spread, I mean, it is just really, really interesting, and I hope you can take time sometime to go and look at it, and read it, read it, it's very interesting.
Thank you, Lucille, again, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, you've had the presentation of the county clerk of the archival project, is your motion to accept that project?
Make a motion, Judge.
Commissioner Kaufman, is there a second? Second, so Commissioner Pargas, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Donna, appreciate it. Item number 12 is Consider an Act Upon April of the 2025 Interlocal Agreements. As you well know, as we prepare our budget and get into it, we have several organizations that the county funds, and in order to do that, we have to enter interlocal agreements. Those interlocal agreements are presented to you today for consideration for acceptance. The only ones that we have not received as of today is the interlocal agreement from the Texas Animal Damage Control, from the Southwest Family Life Center, from the Canipah Volunteer Fire Department, the Savinale Volunteer Fire Department, the Utopia Volunteer Fire Department, the Utopia Recycles, and the Uvalde Food Pantry. Those have not been received as of right now. If we do not receive them by October 1, when the new budget begins, these organizations will not be funded until we receive the interlocal agreements. So I have before you the interlocal agreements that have been received, and I'm asking you to approve those and accept them. Is there a motion to approve them? Commissioner Garza, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Kaufman, we do have Donna Carew that wants to address this.
Diana Olbado Carew, I had previously addressed the court regarding the interlocal agreements. They, as they are written, they are quite broad, open to interpretation, no specific information is provided regarding the amount of funds that will be allocated to these Agreements may change in terms of what was agreed and what actually happens through the course of the year, so I don't know if the county commissioners, through your process, have a contract with these entities, or is it just this one sheet of paper that, again, doesn't clearly define what you're going to be providing to them, but it does clearly say at the discretion of the court. And so in terms of the public, the taxpayers knowing what will actually happen, it isn't clearly stated. So again, I don't know if you have contracts that detail the agreements, but this interlocal agreement document, one page, is very broad and open, and basically doesn't tell the taxpayer very much about what you are or are not going to do. I'm also curious as to why county commissioners continue to fund the Utopia and Concan Fire Departments. Both of those communities are part of Uvalde County, however, they have their own emergency service districts, they're already taxing their citizens to be able to provide fire services, EMS services, and so I'm just confused. I thought that once they became ESTs, the county kind of doesn't have that burden anymore, which is why I think the argument is, if we create EST3, then the county can, you know, put those monies elsewhere. So again, why are they being funded? Also, Uvalde Area Development, what services are they providing to Uvalde County? Is there a report? Where do we see what the benefit is of those dollars that Uvalde County allocates to this Uvalde Area Development? Thank you.
We do have a motion on the floor and a second, but for the discussion of the court. All in favor, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 13 is Consider an Act Upon Award of Bids for the Road Department Materials. De, Carl, you want to explain that one, please, sir?
Good morning, Judge Mitchell, and good morning, Uvalde County Commissioners.
Mike.
Uvalde County solicited bids for county road materials for the program year 25, '26, very timely, as we're fixing to move into the fiscal year, starting, the new fiscal year, starting October 1. Uvalde County advertised in Uvalde Leader News, also posted on Uvalde County website. We obtained information from the Uvalde County Road Department, who, the Road Department has historically acquired materials in years past from the different vendors, firms, and rock quarries around Uvalde County. For, the main reason for doing this is to be open, fair, and transparent, as well as competitive, and to provide for Uvalde County the most advantageous bid and the best use of the taxpayers' money for the next fiscal year in regards to the improvements for the Uvalde County roads. Bids were open, and we received bids from three vendors, Colorado Materials, J&amp;J Excavating, and South Texas Aggregates. The bids were divided up to where we solicited bids for base material, three-quarter inch base, inch and three-quarter inch base, and other elements for the roads, and also separate bids for, just for the asphalt materials. So, at the end of the day, you'll see your spreadsheet there, the main base material, limestone base material that Uvalde County applies to their roads is three-quarter inch base, an inch and three-quarter inch base, limestone base material. We received, on the three-quarter inch base material, and keep in mind, these bids are all FOB, the Uvalde County Road Department would pick them up at the rock quarries and provide the transportation or the hauling of the materials, okay? So this is strictly for the material, strictly for the base material, and does not include any transportation and hauling, since Uvalde County Road Department would be doing that. On three-quarter inch base, Colorado Materials submitted a bid of $8.50. J&amp;J Excavating submitted a bid of $8.75. And South Texas Aggregate, $8. This is for per-ton bases. On the inch and three-quarter inch base, Colorado Materials was $750, J&amp;J Excavating was $750, and South Texas Aggregate was $750. Colorado Materials, let me go back, the three-by-five, this is Gambian Rock, use it where there's erosion, or to mitigate erosion, it's riprap. Again, Colorado Materials was $16 a ton, J&amp;J Excavating was $14.50 a ton, and South Texas Aggregate was $18.50 a ton. So at the end of the day, gentlemen, it would be my recommendation to, for the county to receive the most advantageous bid that we actually award to all three of these vendors, and the Road Department has the capacity to select that quarry where they are performing the work closest to that pit. In other words, if Uvalde County is working up over in the Savinale area or the Utopia area, obviously, they'd want to acquire their materials to mow there at South Texas Aggregate on Highway 127. Again, if they're up here working on County Road 400 roads, obviously, to get the most advantageous and to eliminate the amount of freight, would get it from one of the other quarries closer to that vicinity. So that would be my recommendation for the base material for the court. For the material, for the asphalt, we only received one bid, we did contact a number of other vendors for the asphalt material. For whatever reason, the information that we had to contact those vendors was. was, didn't get to the right person. Didn't get to the correct contact at those places for them to submit a bid. And it would be my recommendation to the court that y'all would approve that the county go back out for asphalt materials. We only received one bid. And don't feel like that's competitive and probably not the most advantageous to Uvalde County.
Okay, so you're recommending that on the type D that we reject and re-advertise for the type D material. Your recommendation on the 3x5 base material is award it to all three, make it available to all three, and depending on how close that particular worksite is to the quarry because the hauling...
That is correct.
The road department have the authority to make that decision.
Yes.
And on the three-quarter inch base, that it be the same thing as well?
That is correct.
Okay. You've heard the recommendation explanation. Is your motion to accept that recommendation? Commissioner Garza, is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Cusman, Diana Carew, you want to say something? All right. You've heard. Is there any additions, corrections, or questions? If not, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Well, I'm number 14 is considering act upon award of the bid for the road department fuels. Mr. Jester?
We had a number of elements on the fuels. We did contact a number of different vendors. This is for not only fuels, but also for lubricants, transmission fluid, DEF, everything you use in diesel-generated equipment that Uvalde County Road Department uses. So we requested bids for fuel, both diesel, off-road and highway. There's red diesel and white diesel, and also unleaded fuel. We received two bids. The bid from Maxi Energy for the diesel fuel off-road was $2.59, $2.5951, $2.59. Highway diesel, $2.78. And unleaded fuel, $2.53, and this would be delivered to the Uvalde County Road Department. We received another bid from 37 Enviro. They're out of Crystal City. They did not give a definite dollar amount, but their price would be the rack price, and that would be whatever the price was the week before that they bought the fuel. Then they would add 25 cents on top of that. So it'd be the rack price for each three of those elements plus 25 cents. Be my recommendation to the court, since Maxi Energy is here locally, and they gave a hard number for each one of those different types of fuel that Uvalde County would award to Maxi Energy on the fuel. And it would be delivered to the Uvalde County Road Department for the year '25, '26.
So your recommendation is award to Maxi Energy the diesel fuel for the off-road, the diesel fuel for the highway usage, and for unleaded fuel?
Yes, sir.
You've heard the recommendation. Is your motion? Mr. Garza, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Jaigle, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Judge, let me continue on the lubricants.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So on the second part of that, we asked bid for 5W-30 diesel oil. This would all be a drum price, 55-gallon drum. 5W-30, 15W-40, transmission fluid, hydraulic transmission fluid, DEF that they add to diesel vehicles, and 55-gallon drum hydraulic fluid. We had a pretty good variance there on the list of bids there. Obviously, the vendor in Crystal City, 370 Enviro, was considerably less than Maxi Energy. I did reach out to the gentleman in Crystal City, and I did ask him if those prices included being delivered to the Uvalde County Road Department because obviously, we didn't want the Uvalde County Road Department to be going down every time they needed a drum of oil. And they said, yes, that was their price to be delivered to the Uvalde County Road Department for the next fiscal year. So as a result of that conversation and the submission of these bids, it's my recommendation that the county award to 370 Enviro out of Crystal City for the hydraulic fluid and the oil and the DEF and transmission fluid for fiscal year '25, '26.
You've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion?
I make the motion to accept.
Commissioner Pargas, is there a second? Commissioner Garza, discussion. Diana Carew. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. What else, sir?
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, sir.
Carl, I'm just curious. There's a lot of difference in there.
Oh, yeah.
They were comparing apples to apples on that.
Typically, exonerations is going to be that much.
Wow, yeah.
Yeah, a big difference. I'm sorry. Historically, that's the way it's been.
Okay.
I'm number 15 is considering act upon, act upon road administration report. De?
Yeah, that's just...
Morning, Judge. Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
This reports from September the 4th through September the 16th. We've been blading roads on 328, 413, and 415, cutting grass on 101 and 301, among other places. We've been cutting brush on 110, 401, 402, and 408. We fixed washouts on county roads 336, 407, and 408. We've replaced road signs on county roads 312, 345, 361, 386, and parts of Canepa. We moved equipment from 336 to 407 and 409. Moved equipment from county roads 336, 407, 379 to 388, 379 to 352, 409, 410. We repaired and greased bump gates on county roads 405, 406, 408, and 413. We removed a fallen tree in Utopia off of West Jackson Street. County Road 336 repairs have been completed by blading, rolling, and adding more base to the road to get it back up in shape. Heavy rains on 6th and 7th of September 2025 washed out the completed crossings on county roads 409 and 410. County Road 409 has been completed, and we're currently working on repairs to replace all the, it blew out six culverts on 410. Had to go down the river to pick up some of them, and most of them were not worth replacing, so we're replacing all of them. County Road 409 has been completed and recovered. Okay. Unfortunately, these repairs will not be included or covered by the disaster declaration. I met with the USDA and NRCS at the Willingham Retaining Dam Number 2 this past week. Cracks we previously filled last year have resurfaced, and these two agencies are conducting an electrical resistivity imaging scan to determine the cause of these cracks. Results are pending and will be provided when the study has been completed. Any questions?
Questions of date?
Are we responsible for the crack?
No.
Fixing the cracks?
No.
No. At this time, what they said, they have money to come in there. They may even have to take part of the dam out and rebuild it if it's that bad because they think it's over...
It really won't involve the road department.
No.
An expense.
They think it's over a recharge hole.
Any major repairs to those dams would be done by the government, federal government? We go in and we do the brush control and stuff like that, but as far as any major stuff, no. And we do that, we do the brush control on an annual basis. This is the first time they've actually had to come in and make any type of major repair.
Yes.
Yeah.
And they had some, like, badger holes. Well, this was open last year, and they just said to cover it up. So we took material up there and put it in it, packed it in as best we could, and it came back, so that means there's something else going on down there.
How long has that been?
How?
How old is it?
About 50 years.
84.
84. Yeah. Yeah. But there's, no, there's more than one. There's three of us, I got.
Anything else?
Anything else? Is your motion to accept the report?
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Cusman is your second. Commissioner Garza, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm number 16, considering act upon line item budget amendments. We have none this morning. I'm number 17 is considering act upon payment of bills. You've had an opportunity to review the bills. Is there a motion to approve? Commissioner Garza, is there a second?
Second, yes.
Commissioner Pargas, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm number 18 is considering act upon approval of monthly reports. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion, sir.
Commissioner Pargas, is there a second? Commissioner Garza, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. As we close today, I'd like to do so in memory of Regina Sansasavilis, Thomas M. Austin, Rudolpho Rudy Davila, Hector M. Gordea, Anita T. Hill, Rogelio L. Rodriguez, Ginger Anne Snyder. Any others?
Maximo Mendoza.
Maximo Mendoza.
And Justin Cameron.
And Justin Cameron.
Cameron.
Justin Cameron.
Have we had Gregoria put on a note?
I think so. I think. But I'll check. Okay, I'll check. Okay, anybody else? If not, that concludes this agenda, and this meeting stands adjourned. Thank y'all for being here.